All right, I'm gonna call the meeting, uh, the, the general meeting to order at 6:03 PM on March 21st. Um, the quorum looks like it's been met, but can we take a roll call?
Mr. Quaglioano.
Here.
Mr. Cready.
Here.
Ms. Murray. Mr. Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley. Mr. Thompson. Mr. Troy.
Here.
All right, with that, uh, we will start the meeting up and we move to number two, closed session. Um, so we will move into closed session at 6:04 PM as indicated the open meeting fact in the agenda. And, uh, can I have a roll call?
A second, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglioano for the second.
Mr. Bitman.
Uh, hi.
Mr. Quaglioano.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley. Mr. Craig.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson. Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
All right, five euro, we will move ahead down to closed session.
Sort of thing, I'm realizing what can I picture you in. Coming back.
All right, sorry about the delay of coming up here, but we will resume in public session at 7:11 PM. Can I get a little call from the...
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Vivin?
Here.
Mr. Thompson? Mrs. Wiley?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Cuadleano?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
All right, with that, no action coming into closed session, we will move on to number four, the Pledge of Allegiance. We have some high five winners. Come on.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unrivaled, indivisible, with the freedom of the world.
Good evening, board. We are excited to have our March Humley High five winners here tonight, and I'm going to have each one of them introduce themselves to you.
Hudson? I'm in first grade, going in.
And I'm in the cabin.
And Hudson, I'm going to share what your school said about you, parts of it. Hudson has worked so hard in applying all positive strategies. He is always willing to help others and enjoys participating in class, especially during math games. Hudson always comes to school with a smile and tries his best each and every day. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Spencer Rowe. I am in fifth grade and I go to Martin Elementary.
I'm Spencer. Do you want to hear what they have to say about you? Spencer is a friendly and kind-hearted individual who attends school every day with a positive attitude and a willingness to learn. Spencer's classmates, now this is the first, we heard a lot from our class staff, but here's some comments from your classmates. He assisted me with completing a project that I was struggling with. Another said Spencer has always been there for me as a friend. He is kind and compassionate. And a third said Spencer is a fantastic, great student.
Hi, my name is Aiden Alvecia. I'm in first grade, I go to the E.L. Elementary.
All right, Aiden. Aiden is always working his hardest, demonstrating commitment and dedication to his work. She's also very collaborative and incredibly willing to help her peers. Her ability to spread smiles makes a big difference in creating a happy and welcoming atmosphere at Leggie.
Hi, I'm Bill Sheridan, in sixth grade at Cunningham Middle School.
Bill, I can't believe you're in middle school. I remember you much smaller and younger, so it's good to see you. Bill has a positive spirit and a love for learning that is infectious. He truly exemplifies the value of diligence, perseverance, and kindness. His remarkable leadership qualities, always ready to lend a helping hand around the school and to his fellow classmates. Congratulations, Bill. Keep up the great work and supportive attitude.
Hi, my name is Megan Belchon, a senior at Hungley High School.
Hi, Megan. Megan is an excellent student and positive role model. She is finishing her Illinois Global Scholar Program project, working on food insecurities in Venezuela, and will graduate with a global academy. Megan is always looking to make an impact, to do her best, and to learn more about the world around her by learning more, taking classes, attending RAD events, and generally just trying to be a positive role model. Congratulations.
My name is Crystal. My name is Crystal. On my program.
All right, Crystal, here is your nomination. Crystal has grown immensely in her time in life and her self-confidence has bloomed. She now has a job and is looking to expand her skills by finding other options with animals. She has made close friendships and often talks to her peers and staff. She has a tender and kind demeanor and is always willing to help others. Last year she worked behind the scenes as the digital person for the Light Talent Show. This year she was in the spotlight, singing in front of a group of, a large group on center stage. She engages in all activities, challenges herself regularly. It's such an honor to watch her grow so much over the last few years. Way to go, Crystal. Congratulations.
All right, with that, we'll move on to number five, the students who have this moment.
Well, great. So first, before we start, since we came up a couple of minutes after the meeting was ready to start, I didn't get to say welcome. It's been a couple of days since I've seen you guys. I can't wait to see your presentation. So I was able to meet with our three student ambassadors from Leggie last week, and I'm so excited to see their minds are spinning and brainstorming and all of those things, so don't be nervous. While they set that up, I do also want to just give a shout out to their sponsor advisor, the teacher, Mrs. McLaughlin, to help start the student ambassador program in fifth grade a couple of years back at the beginning? A few years back? And they're going to highlight some of the things that they've done there as well and answer some other questions about Leggie. But I want to thank Mrs. McLaughlin for bringing the program. She has been in our district for a number of years and in a variety of different buildings and positions, but the one thing that stands out the most is her student centeredness. And so, working with this program and our individuals in fifth grade has been a pleasure. So thank you so much for that, and thank you guys for being here tonight. And we will turn it over. Now, are you guys going to introduce yourselves or do you want me to go ahead and do that? You've got it? All right.
Hi, we are from Leggie Elementary School. Our names are Raya, Morgan, and Alejandro. Alejandro. What is the ambassador program about? Hello, I have been ambassador for about a month or two, and I love it. Here are a few things the ambassador program is about. First of all, the ambassadors come together every other Wednesday First of all, the ambassadors come together every other Wednesday to have a meeting. Every morning, the ambassadors come to school earlier and hold the doors open for the students coming in from the buses and car riders. The ambassadors also visit our senior friends at Heritage Woods. Another thing is that the ambassadors are always busy. Ambassadors have to brainstorm all the time with new and improved ideas. The ambassadors are sometimes the people who think of new and new things for Leguia to do and improve. The ambassador program is all about making Leguia a better place. Activities we have done in the past. Some activities we have done in the past are, the art show, which is always a great masterpiece. Another activity we have, we have is hanging out with our fun friends at the retirement hall. We also had an amazing P E game with the students versus teachers called Angry Birds. We also had a bunch of assemblies that were amazing. We have done many other activities in the past I can't even seem to bring to the top of my head. From my heart, what are my favorite memories or parts at Leguia? Some of my favorite memories of Leguia are great things to remember, especially my favorite memory, the laser show assemblies. The laser show was the best thing ever. I mean, how do you even get them that cool? Another one of my favorite memories are being a student at Leguia General. I love how Leguia is super welcoming to everyone. Lastly, my favorite part is being in Ms. Betsy's class. Ms. Betsy is a great teacher. I also love being an ambassador because I get to help the school, and that's the last for me. Now let's hear from Morgan as she says something awesome.
Beautifying Leguia. The seniors are leaving the market of Leguia. The seniors are beautifying Leguia by planting flowers and bushes in front of the school. So we are raising money by doing the coin drive. The coin drive is where the student ambassadors talk to their class about bringing in coins to donate to the coin drive. Whichever class raises the most money gets a PTA prize. Optural. Optural is where the fifth graders at Leguia walk the kindergarteners to their buses. These fifth graders are picked by their teachers asking for volunteers to help them walk them to the buses. The fifth graders that do this go to the kindergarten hallway to find all of their kindergarteners that are on their bus. The fifth graders that walk the kids to the buses give the kids Leo bucks for good behavior. A little bit more about Leguia. Leguia fifth grade concert. Leguia has been doing the fifth grade concert ever since it opened. We have done many themes like Hollywood and traditions. This year, we are doing a campfire theme. Our concert starts with the band and orchestra playing their instruments in front of the school. Each, each fifth grade class gets their own song to showcase in front of the school and parents. Then at the end of the concert, we will be doing our grand finale. This week, this year, we are doing a song called Fireflies. Each fifth grader will get their own small light. We have choreographed our own dance for it, too. We will also have some soloists singing in front of everyone. Now let's hear from Alejandro.
Dual language program. I was part of the dual language program for all my years up until fifth grade. It was a good program, but I felt like I was not speaking as much Spanish very often. I also felt like I wasn't learning as much as I could have been even in a regular session. I am happy I was a part of it and even more happy of being a part of the monolingual class. I was leading a tour of Leguia. If I was leading a tour of Leguia, I would show them the gym, because it is where lots of students. I would show them the cafeteria, because every gate is very level. I would go outside and show them the playground, because it is where all the kids have their resting or playing area. And lastly, I would show them the library, because that is where all the books are.
My memory. One of my favorite memories was the Shavuot, because I learned so much about Mars and it was so fun, because we were actually in a spaceship or a mission control. So that's one of my favorite memories. Another thing was the wax booth, because it was so fun. We had to research and then we got to become a person. We had to be static for an hour. I think it was so fun.
Leguia is a great place to be.
Now, remember, I told you, the purpose is we want to hear from students and there's the things that are going well, and maybe some things that we can do and improve on, and I think you had touched on that. And so, Mrs. McLaughlin, I definitely see why you selected these three individuals to be part of that, and we thank the parents for all the things that they've done. We have some future leaders here sitting at the table. But I know I have a couple of questions, but I'll see if any of you have any questions for them about Leguia. How can we donate? Are you still taking, can we donate to the collection?
Uh, yeah, we are actually starting the week after spring break.
Okay, so we can get that there. I think Mrs. McLaughlin shared that your idea was that you can leave a legacy, and it's kind of similar to, the high school seniors often have a donation that they would leave to the school, and so that's kind of what you are doing there, and with that, adding to the beauty of the building and helping environmentally. Alejandro, I have a question for you. You talked about, you mentioned in there with the dual language program, you didn't say that you were speaking enough, practicing enough Spanish in there. Do you have any ideas of how we could do that better?
Uh, maybe like extend it like 15 minutes to 30 minutes, like the Spanish one was hard to practice.
And what were some of the things you also said, that maybe some different activities in the monolingual class?
Yeah, because like we would get to do like math was a way different way than we were doing it in the normal classroom, and I liked it that way better, because we got to like, I at least got to understand it better.
And since you guys are the ones who are in our classrooms and are building, I thank you for sharing that information, and as we look at ways that we can grow programs, it's important, and so I thank you for answering those questions for me.
Any other questions? I think you did an outstanding job. Are you the ones who are fifth graders, are you ready to go to middle school?
Yeah.
Not nervous about it at all?
Nope.
We'll check back next year. With that, thank you very much.
Mrs. McLaughlin, did you just get a picture of them at all in front, like in their socks? Can we get one of them at the table there?
Yes, can we do that?
Good thinking. Then don't forget to take your goodies. Of course.
Hey, thank you. You're nice, you too.
All right, with that, we'll move to number six, student recognition. We've got a couple of recognitions, I think both from Hyman.
Who do I start with?
So we're going to start with the IESA state chess tournament.
Hello, I am Dani, Didi, at the Hyman Middle School Chess Team Program.
Hi, I am Raya, I'm at the Hyman Middle School Chess Team Program.
Our sponsor, Lisa Franklin. These two, they're both sixth graders, and they won six out of eight of their chess matches at state and earned bronze medals, which Dani is very proud of.
Are they competing against sixth and through eighth grade?
No, they were competing against only sixth graders, but there were, I think, 800 kids total there. So probably about 300. I mean, they didn't play all of the eighth graders.
Right. And how long have we had the chess program?
Uh, this is our first.
That's pretty outstanding for the first year.
It exceeded my expectations. I just wanted to not finish last.
I really hate it.
Will you guys do it again next year?
Yes, yeah.
So if they win seven out of eight, they get a silver medal, and eight out of eight is a gold medal.
So I'm curious, what did you, what do you enjoy about chess? What got you interested in chess?
Um, my favorite thing about chess was that it was hard to learn, and for that reason, I wanted something challenging to learn, so I thought chess would be the perfect match.
My favorite thing about chess is like learning all the openings and knowing what to do.
How long have you all been playing chess? How many years?
Um, well, my dad started teaching me like how to piece it move when I was five, but I didn't like really get into it until like fifth grade.
I started playing when I was six, and I was a little bit of it.
And were your matches quick, or did you guys have to really work hard or a long time for your matches?
Well, the first match I played went on pretty quick. It wasn't like a fail match. He was, I'm pretty sure, he started at six months ago.
Okay.
So I had to teach him how to actually play. And, um, but most of the time after the first match, it took about 40 minutes per match.
Okay, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
My first few matches were kind of quick, but my last match took like 30 minutes. We were like the last ones there.
That's up to Dani, congratulations.
It has been brought to my attention that I did not mention that they both finished top 20 out of 234 kids.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the IESA state wrestling tournament from Hyman, Coach G.
All right, how we doing?
Good.
Good. Thank you for allowing me to come over and present Malik. I thought before I presented him, I thought I could start us off with a fun little story. This should probably be Malik's second time here. Last year's a seventh grader, we got to the, well, the night before the sectional meet, the meet you, at the place in top three before he qualified for state, we checked our weight in wrestling after you can't exceed your certain weight class, and it was good to go Friday night, so we felt pretty good about Saturday going in. Saturday shows up, we get the boss, we head over to the Cal, and we get, you know, we're in line getting Malik's stuff up, and he steps on his tail, and he's four pounds over. And I'm like, and I step back, I kind of wipe my eyes, I'm like, step on again, and sure, you know, sure enough, four pounds over again. And I look at him, I'm like, dude, what are you doing? You're a young guy, you just can't make low weight. And I said, he goes straight face, he looks at me right, and he goes, the Habachi, which is too good to pass up. So here we are a year later, apparently Chinese wouldn't have been as good as it used to be. But, you know, I couldn't be more proud of Malik, three-year wrestler for Hyman, and he's done a fantastic job. He's really grown as a young man, he's a great student, great competitor, a great teammate. Anybody he comes in contact with is a player for them, kid in the noble league. He ended his three-year Hyman career as an eighth grader by taking fourth place at 167 pounds. I just want to say thank you to my parents and coaches, and I want to say thank you to the board for recognizing me for this achievement. I hope we can just have success across all sports, rest of the district.
Oh, great. All right, we'll be on to public comments. I have two public comments. Start with Nancy Arverson. You can correct me, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's Arverson.
Arverson.
Good evening. So, hi, Nancy Arverson. I'd like to address you on the Light Program. So there's been a great deal of transpired in the last few days. The Light Program has some decisions that have been made by the leaders that represent that program. Actually, Coach G being here, like, I was thinking to myself, sort of contrast, four kids growing up in the district, super proud parent of 158, the program of like high school sports, and just seeing him remind me of, it's a great contrast to how heartbreaking this program has been over the last several years. So what's really important to say is that going back to the end of the school year with the changes that were put in place, and I know I dress, some of you are familiar faces to me from last year and the year before when we came, the changes seem to be very promising. Something that's critical and important is that while structural changes to a program benefit, our mission was always like, it's not going to change in time for our students who are, have one more year left, but we're going to make sure as parents that we have a voice for the educators and for our students, so that future students have an opportunity to have a transition program that will serve. So there was, seemed to be great promise with some structural changes coming in, the thing is that you have to marry that with doing right things for people, and ultimately for students. Ethically and emotionally sound decisions that impact the lives of students that are the most vulnerable in the district, and once again, the students number one, that are getting impacted by poor decisions by leadership. We have a 14-year or longer veteran being removed with one leaf noted to our students and our families. Somebody needs to make an inquiry and an investigation as to why. We can't get a clear cut truth, we can't get a clear cut transparency, we can't get a logical decision as to why this is made. We've been told nothing bad happened, we've told that this is a great educator from this leader, yet there is a program that has a vacancy. And literally was told that those students, those five students deserve a good teacher. So go to our students, right? Like, we all know that, that's just clear. So where this all leads to is that I truly believe that decisions being made are personal, and as a leader, you can make decisions to make your program be what you want it to be. That is your choice. But the choice of it can be at the demise of the students, like literally negligent towards their emotional wellbeing happen today. Literal negligence, I will use that word, like terrible, terrible outcome. No plans in place for these students, no plans in place for who their teachers are yet tonight unless they No plans in place for who their teachers are yet tonight unless they say tomorrow of this teacher. They're going to walk in after spring break to new classrooms, new students, new teachers, new setups, new, all the things. But when you look at the schedule, structurally, that hasn't really changed from what's being presented this afternoon. Like, what's all due when they get back? Um, and it's really hard, like, I'm trying to gather all my thoughts because I didn't plan on being here today. And I didn't even know there was a board meeting tonight until a few hours ago. So excuse me, I don't have clarity, but I think I need to, like, wrap it up really quickly to say what's happened at the light program over the last few days has not been acceptable in the eyes of anybody logical as a parent, as an administrator, as a community member, as a student. Um, our students don't have the voice to come up here and tell you exactly what they're experiencing, what they're feeling. But I can tell you, emotional breakdowns happened today. What's really disturbing is that the decision maker that made those decisions acted as that was being announced to these students. They walked away without watching their decision come to play in the lives of these students that have already been, so many of them, through so much over the last three to four years. There is no logical reason to remove a teacher in any capacity typically developing special education students with six weeks, six weeks left in the school year unless there's clearly something wrong happening in the classroom or a person has a, an emergency, we would all say, oh, my gosh, we're so sorry that happened, right? You have to, it's going to be a long six weeks. This is a deliberate removal of an educator that's impacting the lives of all of these students. It's a ripple effect to everybody in that pod. It affects every educator, every therapist, every social worker, every parent. It affects every family, it affects every student, and it did not have to happen. The only thing that would have been okay after the debacle of a parent meeting last night would have been for this educator to stand up today and admit and own that wasn't the right decision, come in today and say, I'm stopping this. Because the reason that we want to see if there's any nuances in the new setup for fall of a storefront and a vocational center and all the great things that we want to see happen is that someone's going to observe nuances over a four to six week period so that we can open up better in the fall. We know when students exit, they change over the summer. We know therapists change over the summer. We know parents change over the summer. You're not going to observe nuances in four to six weeks. What you're going to do is what you did, turn our students' lives upside down for no apparent reason. The only logical reason is that I want to build a team and I'm going to put the people that I know in. And that's just not fact, but that's my gut feeling. So I urge you to do an inquiry, an investigation, whatever you call it, at the board because the decisions that were made impact the lives of these children was not the right decision. Was not thought through, and wasn't executed in a way that protected the wellbeing of children emotionally. This could affect them the rest of their life. It's not okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Uh, next we have, um, forgive me. XL.
Hi, Al Trapp.
Hi.
Forgive your ending. Thank you for allowing us to have this moment to speak. Uh, it is on the same category as Nancy. She's so eloquently spoken, you're not going to get that from me. I'm very direct. Um, I am Samantha Trapp's mother, my name is Hiel Trapp. Samantha's been with this district for eighteen years. And for me to stand up here today and fight for a teacher, I would fight for every single one that she's had. This one, the most, because this is where she's going to end her school and her light program in this district. This is the most critical time in her life. These children work on security with individuals, with their teacher. When they have that security with that teacher, that's when they excel. When you remove that person from their lives, they shut down the resort, their resilience, they have emotional breakdowns. They don't know how to adjust to that. Some people think, well, they're going to have to get used to that to go into the real world. Not today, they don't. They don't know about next year, they don't know about next week. They live right now. Right now, their world is shattered. This director thought that this is the best thing to yank a ten-year teacher out of this class. There's three, there's three teachers in that class. Mrs. Felley, who has one year, or ten years, she is their teacher, another teacher, and a brand new teacher into our district who has experience. So let me back up one second. The position that Mrs. Felley is being thrown into is in the SNAP program at Marlo Middle School. That SNAP program is for children with autism. The new teacher that came into our district with one year into our district has experienced pain from a spire, which is at Londo Middle School. That program is for autism, autism children. Same program, same grades. Why wasn't that teacher put into that SNAP program position? Yet you gained this ten-year teacher out who has established relationships with all these children. This new teacher has very few caseloads, has no relationship with the seven children in this classroom that Mrs. Felley is in charge of. How does that make sense? It doesn't. I see it in your face. It doesn't make sense. We can't get answers to why that was done. We're still left here baffled. We're left with speculation. Is this a personal agenda? Are you personally stacking your team? What is happening here? Because this is in no benefit to these children. I had to retrieve my daughter today. They called me on the way there, you're going to have to come in. She is clinging to her for dear life. Don't let her go. Stopping hysterically. That person wasn't there to see the outcome of her decision. Okay. She had somewhere else to be. These kids have been pushed to the backside for years. They have been moved out of buildings, 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 buildings. Now they're in a pod, a sixth grade pod over at Marlo Middle School. You have kids aging, twenty-two years old now with these twelve-year-olds. That's where they are. And I will give you this, things are moving in the direction to getting a permanent location for these kids. But not everything written on paper is gold for them. They have individual education programs, IEPs, individualized for them. There are social workers for every child because they work on emotions. Those social workers help them, guide them. They need that social support in their life. That doesn't matter? That, that part of their IEP doesn't matter? Let's just destroy them, yank this person who they are so solid with. Imagine one of your kids having an amazing teacher that they come home and rave about every single day. Rave about this, tells you how much they love it. They're excelling in their class because they love their teachers so much that they are going leaps and bounds. And then one day that child comes home and says, they moved her, she's gone. How do you think that kid is going to feel? What do you, what do you think is going to happen to their success in that class? It's going to plummet. That's what's going to happen, April first. Because right now, she's there tomorrow and they still see her. And remember, cognitive skill care, they still see her there in the class. On April first, they're not going to see her ever again. She's not going to be there. The emotional disrupt that that's going to put on those kids, I don't think they're staffed enough for that. It, this is destruction to those seven children. And I can speak for every single one of them. Every one of them and their parents. No one is happy with this decision. It is a reckless decision to this program who has already been pushed aside for years, for years. Why disrupt this class? Why disrupt this class? I know that class needs a teacher, SNAP program needs a teacher, but take them one. Real junior into this district with all the qualifications and set her over there. It's no relationships here, it's no relationships there, brand new teacher there. It's all, it only makes sense. I, we need answers. Like Nancy said, this needs to be investigated, this needs to be discussed, this is destroying kids' lives. This can't happen anymore. Not, these light children cannot impact anymore. I thank you to look at this situation because it is not right. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment. Uh, number eight, decision and adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes, suggestions for the agenda? Matt, uh, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as printed. Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Okay, we will move ahead with the agenda as it passes the six here or the voice switch. Uh, moving on to number nine, the superintendent's report, Ms. Lombard.
First of all, go ahead and highlight the donations that are in the agenda. A number of donations again from our community, nothing but cakes. Um, a hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cents check back to the high school dance team from a rebate of sales at their dance competition. Jameson Charhaus, a five hundred dollar check for the high school girls bowling team. First to finish, five hundred dollar check for high school girls track team, a rebate, rebate from the sales at their track invite. And then United Way, twenty-five dollars, twenty-five dollar check for the high school National Honor Society. So we thank all of our, uh, community organizations and members for supporting our students at various levels, uh, in our district. Couple other things to highlight, March is Disability Awareness Month. And today we saw a lot of students and staff and under the tables up here, you probably see a number of board members and administrators, uh, rocking their socks, uh, in support of our Down Syndrome awareness, um, as well. And so that was really neat to see, especially in, uh, in so many of our classrooms with students really understanding and, and learning and, uh, celebrating, um, their friends who are in their classrooms and in their buildings. Um, I had the opportunity to, um, in the last couple of weeks, be part of a number of classrooms at, um, variety of different grade levels. And, uh, that's extremely important as we're moving here into the, the end of the school year. We're looking at making decisions based on a lot of our KPIs and the work that our administrative teams have been working on and to stay connected to what's actually happening in that classroom and to be able to, uh, see where some of the recommendations are coming and the benefits, uh, that will impact our students and staff has been great. A number of us have been also, um, heavy opportunity, uh, over the last couple of weeks to meet with a variety of parent groups and to be able to have honest conversations about, uh, variety of our programs, uh, to, um, get feedback. Uh, it was great to even have that for some of our students here with some of the programs that we're looking at as well so that, um, as the recommendations are moving forward, what they were hearing, uh, sometimes some of the things that we're not able to see, um, from the seats and the roles that we are in. And so, uh, those voices are extremely important to, to hear and know and will be, things that will be taken forward, um, in some of our presentations in upcoming months, uh, again, for some of the strategic planning work that has been, uh, occurring. We continue in the district, it's amazing to see that tomorrow, we, we're ending before spring break and we come back and there's just a short, about seven weeks left of the school year. It's gone really, really fast. But to continue to see so many personal, um, building and team, um, accomplishments, growths, uh, that we're seeing both inside and outside of the classrooms. And when we do return back, uh, shortly after that, uh, state testing begins for a number of our grade levels. We did, uh, that last week, we had, uh, the, uh, science assessment. And we'll be moving into the IAR and then shortly after that, the SAT. And so, um, for our students to be able to, um, show the growth and the gains and the things that, uh, they have learned throughout this school year. We know that it's not just a compilation of what's been happening in that grade level, but all of those things. And I think we're very, very excited to see the fruits of the work of our teams and our staff, uh, of what we've been putting in place to try to again, uh, show that growth, especially after the pandemic years. And so, while we won't have that right away, uh, we are eagerly, uh, waiting to see what those things look like, um, when we return back after summer and all of that. But, uh, those things will be happening after the start of the, uh, fourth quarter, I guess. So, um, lots of great things, uh, continue to happen in our district. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Ms. Lombard. Um, number ten, Freedom of Information Act request. We'll fill that over you, Ms. Lombard.
Yes, so, um, I did submit a FOIA report to the board. As also just a reminder to everybody, we have these posted on our website as well, on the district website. Um, and there was only one FOIA request in the past month.
Any, any questions?
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to number eleven, the president's report. Um, just a couple of things on top of my head, I just wanted to, uh, mention, not any details around it, but we, Bombard and I did have a meeting, um, with the head of HEA and HESPA. It's something we're doing trying to kind of have outreach, to make sure we have, uh, good communications with our two unions. It was the first time I had been a part of something like that, and I thought the meeting went really well. I think there was a lot of good discussion. Um, and, uh, I think it was an important thing to do and to keep doing, uh, to, to extend that communication to really all our staff who are here for our kids and try to get feedback. Um, the second thing is, um, may have brought this up before, but there were three curriculum meetings. One at the elementary, one at the middle school, and one at the high school. These meetings were, uh, well-run. Um, I hope for public attendance, if we continue this in the future, uh, to kind of see what's going on around really driving towards student achievement. I think the, the plans are there in place and we just need to make sure we, we keep doing that. In addition to that, I've sat in on, um, a session with the ISBE, um, through the IASB, um, around the Illinois Report Card and kind of a deep dive into some of the data there. And it was, uh, for me, it was, who was a newer board member in Lightning, uh, on some of the information that's in there. And just a couple of things I wanted to highlight, um, around this. One, the, if you look at their scores for the schools and all our school services commendable, um, they have proficiency as part of that. So where we are in English and our language and math proficiency. Um, but in, in most cases, if you're at forty-five percent proficiency or roughly thereof, you get full points in the rating that from the state. And, uh, when you contrast that to the goal, which is in twenty thirty-two or maybe twenty thirty-three because of COVID, that the state of Illinois wants ninety percent of the students to be proficient. Um, I think the state needs to do a better job of extending that out because I don't think we're actually differentiating the schools. And by not kind of putting that kind of separation on schools and giving people full points, it kind of takes away that push. So when you, when you look at that, they do emphasize growth quite a bit. I'm actually personally sure that the growth metric drives to more proficient students, but that's something for those who are in the field to debate a little bit more on that. But, uh, I think I highlight this at the board level because I think we are going to have to push with our strategic plan to kind of set up our own metric. I wish we could align better with what the state is doing, but I think we're going to have to push a little bit more on the proficiency side to kind of give us something to reach for. I think that is our ultimate goal. Ninety percent might be actually a little bit too high. I think that'll be hard because once you get to a certain point, you're going to want to actually raise the level of what proficiency a grade level is. But, uh, I think it's something we're going to want to look at as we go through strategic plan. And, uh, I hope the ISBE starts looking at this and spreads it out a little bit more because I think they're clumping all the schools, uh, together on that. Uh, other than that, it was very good discussion, and there's another one next week, so we'll attend. Um, that could be into that, so. Those were my comments on that, but we'll move to eleven point one, board discussion. Any new business ideas people would like to bring up? Now, I do have one, which is I think we should have a discussion around the structure of the, the meetings that we have here. And we, we tried this a little bit with the curriculum side of things, of pulling that out as a separate meeting. Uh, the PTAC is a separate meeting. Um, I think we would benefit, not to necessarily add more meetings, but give a little bit more form to the, the committee meeting and look at that. I've looked at a lot of the different boards around here, everybody's doing something a little bit different. So, um, yes, we had a couple of quick meetings here that don't take that long, but a lot of times our meetings are four or five hours long. And maybe we could get a little bit more in-depth on things like special education or finance if we broke some of those out. I don't want to jump to the solutions, but I think as a board, we should. I don't want to jump to the solutions, but I think as a board, we should consider this, look at it, and that's something I think we'd like to put on there as a new business agenda item. Any comments? All right, with that, no other, if there's no other comments or items to be brought up, we move on to number 12, the consent agenda. So we have the consent agenda as written here, there's 12.1 through 12.10 that we'll go for. I will make a motion, or is there any discussion around any of the items? Okay, not seeing any discussion. I will make a motion to approve and adopt the consent agenda as presented, 12.1 through 12.10.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
With the consent agenda passes six zero, and we will move on to number 13, which is the action item here. We'll start with 13.1, policy 760 update, Ms. Lombard.
Just a reminder, this is the second reading for the policy a couple of months, that we brought forth a recommendation to the residency, the state has allowed that districts look at waiving the out-of-district fees for staff members if they'd like to, to get bringing their students here. The recommendation that was added to this policy was that it would not be a full waiving of that, it's probably a little over $13,000 a year, that that would be at a 50% rate. And so it's gone through its first reading, and we're here for its second and final reading. Any questions?
Not seeing any questions, I'll make a motion to approve 13.1, which is the policy 760 update.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, 13.1 passes six zero, we move to 13.2, the IEFA 2024-25 renewal.
So as we looked at the committee poll and just took action on the IEFA, we didn't have what the fees would be for IESA, so I gave a brief update that we would be putting that here in the packet for this evening. It's an annual renewal. We would love to be able to continue on with participation in the IESA. We've seen some of our athletes and some of our other clubs and organizations, so there's, it runs the gamut, too. We've also had participation in some of the other events, like our choir and our band and things like that. And so this, again, is just an annual renewal. There's not a contract to sign the same as we do for IEFA, but we do follow the same guidelines and rules. And so what's in the packet today are just what are the fees for the '24, '25 school year moving forward. And so just want to seek approval that we can start the summer here and into the spring signing up our different activities for student engagement with IESA for next school year.
All right, any comments? All right, so I will motion to seek approval of 13.2, IEFA 2024-25 renewal. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Troy. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
With that, it passes six zero, and we will move forward with 13.3, Director of Community Relations. The, basically moved to the website, I don't know if you want to describe a little bit, but just for everybody's benefit, we did bring this up with the idea that we could pass it, but we may also table it, but just for some discussion.
Thank you, yes. So last week, this is a continuation of the discussion last week about the, when I presented the communications plan, which included a recommendation that we move to a more robust and fully-supported website, which is with a company called Final Site. So there is a memorandum there that provides kind of a recap of why this is important, what the benefits are for us, including actually a little bit of a savings financially. So there's also the contract in there for your review, and just wondered if you have any questions on any of that that I can help answer.
Mrs. Lombard, also looking at bringing it here now, with that timeline that would allow for some of the work and migration to start happening once that contract has been finalized, been approved, as well as there was some benefits or not really benefits, some discounts based on the number of pages that they would assist in that migration as well, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. But regardless of whether we approve that tonight, or we, as a board wants to wait, we will still be able to get that done. Don't want to rush the process, there's plenty that we can do in preparation for this change as well. So just want the board to be comfortable, but to also be available to answer any questions with the contract or the situation itself.
Any discussion around that? I know Ms. Wiley, you weren't here last week, so.
Just a couple of questions. So will this be a full cut over or is it a full migration? Like will it be a cutoff for the current hosting and then going to this new platform?
Yeah, the plan is to have it all done at one time. And part of it depends on how long that takes, and sometimes that's a little bit hard to judge, but they've given us a general timeline for this, and they are offering us some assistance with that. So in general, we would do it all at one time. Some districts do it, you know, they could start with the district site and roll over the school site later, but in talking with Ms. Lombard about it, we'd like to be able to do it all at one time.
No, if it is not ready for the user, for the families as they go to that website, it would still cognetically look the same, some might be on one platform versus the other. Our hope is that we'd be able to get there, but if not, it won't, part of it won't be shut down, if you will.
Right, okay. And the other question I had was, so this is going to allow more configuration at like our own level? We won't have to have like the company, Final Site, they're not going to be doing all the configurations for us, they're going to be training us on how to really manage the site on our own, correct?
Yes. So Final Site offers a variety of ways to do this, some that are fully customizable and quite expensive, and others that aren't. So we're opting for a more simple, one of their templates, but I think it's great. I think it looks perfect without spending all the money. But then, yes, so they work with me as the primary person to teach me all the things, but also they offer training for our school webmaster that we have, you know, people at the school level, which I hope we will, managing some of this. We also have lots of training videos, they have like a whole library of things on demand, you can watch when you want to. They also have a virtual webmaster option where, you know, if we want them to do something customizable for us, we can, we have access to a certain amount of free time with that person. It's like an extra webmaster, if you will, like a consultant or no. So the idea is that they train us to do it, yes, we would be managing all of that, but there is, it's so fully supported, so if we run into trouble, you know, you call customer support and they're there to help you, we don't have that situation right now.
Okay.
If I recall, sorry, it's easier to manipulate, you don't have to write HTML code, XML code, that kind of stuff. This is something that is more.
More plug and play.
More profitable.
More plug and play, so that my goal with this is, yeah, it's really a win-win for everybody. So for our schools that can be operating at least their calendars and certain things on their own with ease, and also knowing that there's full support if they need it, which is probably from the communications department, but also for the end user, you know, when things are easier to update and use for us, we can keep things more up-to-date for the end user. And so just, yeah, providing that sort of seamless way to perform these updates will really help the end user coming to visit the site. If we don't have up-to-date information, they're not going to come back. So we know, we recognize the importance of that, and we need to make that as easy and quick as possible so that we can keep up with it.
And then last question, so the integrations in with the other tools that we have, like Web Store or places that repair fees, integration in with like the sport hosting and all the different activities, that's all contemplated into the plan?
Correct.
Okay, and that'll be seamless as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions?
Yes.
Yeah.
On page two, there's a section for translations, and it says five languages. Is that what they translate to, is just the limit on five foreign languages, or am I misunderstanding that section?
No, you are understanding that section. So actually, a lot of website companies, including Final Site, offer free translation through Google. And apparently, Google is going to be no longer supporting that, we found that out through Final Site. So Final Site and other companies are now offering a third party that will assist with that. I don't want to be caught in that situation where all of a sudden that's just not, no longer supported, so often to do the, they call it WSL, so that we can have our most frequently spoken languages available for translation. Can we add to those? Yes, we definitely can, we'll pay more, but we can. So I chose the top five languages for now, and if that's something we feel like we need to expand, we can do that.
How many languages do we have within our school district?
A lot more than five.
No, I kind of figured that, but like, how did you determine the cut line to be at five?
Because that was their cut line, and I wanted to just make sure that we hit the top five. So in reality, we've got forty-some, right, Amy?
No, it's like fifty?
No, it's like, it's more.
It's more than that.
It's like over a hundred.
Oh, okay.
But our top ones, I mean, a percentage like 35%, our Spanish speakers, Polish is about 17%. That next one is right, Urdu and Ukrainian and Portuguese, and one more, Filipino, are our top ones.
Okay, because that's where my concern is, and I don't know what the raw number of households are that speak that language, so I don't know where that cut line is. We run the risk of not being able to communicate with some of those households. I don't know that we can reach all 100% without covering all of the languages here, but want to make sure that we can at least reach as many as we can before we start thinning that out really, really sharply.
Well, certainly, I can come back with some additional information on that.
That'd be great.
Yeah, we don't have a number of households, but it's about 684 students, our Spanish-speaking population of our, oh, where's the total? There's not a total on this. Six eighty-four is 35%, you can do that, of that household number.
I think one of the things, too, is we've been working through just the programming for multilingual, we can look at the number of languages we learn, you know, as we were talking yesterday with some of our families, they may be marking that but don't need that additional support of that at home. And so through working with our impact and some of our other avenues, we can get that information.
Yeah.
And I think then from there, we could probably then add different languages, we, you know, bring those as we move forward, but we definitely want to have a service. I know we got to work with Melissa on which, making sure which languages this year and into the future have been requested for translation. Those would be the ones we'd want to start with and then could add additional ones if we want as well.
Sure.
That's extremely important, and that'll be ever-changing.
Right, and I figured it would.
There's always an option, too, if the language isn't supported for translation within the tool, we can provide a plugin that would allow a user to click on and then be able to do the translation, like what a Google Translate would do. So that would pick that gap up for those.
How many languages does our current website support?
A lot. I mean, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
And you said it's still due to Google, but that is changing.
Right, so it sounds like you're going to end up outsourcing this to a different company that provides the translation.
That's what I have gathered, yeah. But I'm certainly happy to dive into this a little bit more and let you know what I can find out.
Thank you.
And what that would cost, yeah. It is important. Agreed. Any other questions?
My question is, do we want to move forward with this tonight, or do we want to wait until we get additional information on the languages? Because the language is something we could add on, make it any points as well.
Yes.
Do more detail and figure out what it is. I guess I'm comfortable moving forward, and I'd like to make sure we have the time to go over the summer.
I agree.
Timing.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve 13.3, the Director of Community Relations contract with Final Site.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Craddy, and I have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
All right, with that, the supplemental purchase orders pass with six zero, we move on to number 15, Resolution of Non-Reemployment, Resolution 2024-0301, as is in your fourth packet. Dr. Terry, do you have anything to add to this?
I do have a few things.
All right, with that, we have any comments? All right, with that, I will make a motion to approve the number 15, the Resolution of Non-Employment, Resolution 2024-0301 of Milbreth. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Murray. Can I have a roll call vote?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
All right, with that, the Resolution of Non-Employment, number 15, Resolution 2024-0301 passed six zero. Move on to number 16, all the comments, I think there is one. All right, Ms. Cross.
First, I wanted to say thank you for the acknowledgement and celebration of World Down Syndrome Day. Having this happen district-wide has been a long time coming, and I finally feel like the people that sit up on this board and the superintendent understand the value of true inclusion for our most vulnerable. With all of this said, finding out about the right program sudden move and hearing how hard today was for Samantha and other students, and knowing how difficult change is for our kids, it truly breaks my heart to see that contrast from today. Our kids deserve more than to get shafted again. Most people know that I fight for Taylor, which is obvious, but for those that don't get it, I fight for all of our kids in special education, since Samantha Trout is on the top of my list. My need to advocate for Down Syndrome awareness actually began with her, since she actually attended my wedding, albeit in Hyatt's room. So my need to see our district do what is right is very personal, beyond just my own daughter. It is crucial that our kids and parents have clear communication, the biggest pet peeve for parents in this district for a long time, is the lack of transparency. And though I know that that has improved immensely, it can't falter now, especially when it comes to our special education community. So though I'm beyond thankful for how far we've come on many things, there is always work to be done, and a reminder as to why I will continue to show up and not just sit in the seat, but be a voice. So I implore you to reconsider some of the decisions that have happened recently and lately. Ending on a lighter note, though, I expect to see all of you gather down here and show off your rockin' socks for a photo op because I need a picture or it didn't happen. Thanks, guys.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cross. All right, with that, we'll do number 17. I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:20 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Quagliano. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the meeting is adjourned, and if you would like to gather up and have a picture, I think that's up there. I think any of us have. I need to get some.
Black socks are our color.
What?
Black socks.
Taking my shoes off.
Taking my shoes off. It might change the smell.
That's horrible.
I'm playing black socks. Guys, go do your thing. I have black pants. I'm wearing...
For me, it's easier to...
I don't have... I don't hold them.
Does that work?
Nobody needs to see my feet anyway. I didn't, I don't care. I'm wearing a fetish.
Look at Deanie's socks. You're too far.
No, am I wrong?
I was making up. Whatever. Yeah. Yeah.
Wizard of the box. And a cat. Well, I hope I didn't take you to the water. That's weird. We're dying. I don't know. Who's setting the water? I got that.
I got that. Hold on.
Our kids.
Thank you.
I'm getting a burger.
Add a number.
I don't feel right now.
I got it. I can't feel. You got your...
Yeah, I got it.
That's my, that's my... Awesome. Sure, did it happen? Yep. Like it's so...
I'll have no steam going in there.
I know, I'm sorry.
I think they only have one. Black, I can't tell.
And you can put the tape on.
Trying to look indulgent.